I'm going to call this meeting of the Farmington School Board to order. Please rise and join me in staying with Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
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 Hold on, you got one more thing down there.
Welcome, school board members, staff, guests. I think the first item on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Are there any questions or additions to the agendas? And if not, may I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Jaclyn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The measure is unanimously approved. Next item on our agenda, good news and superintendent update. Superintendent Berg.
Thank you Chair Christensen and members of the community. It's been, I mean, we only do these once a month. We get packed, which is a good news here. Good news for good news, I guess. First, I want to start by, you know, giving a shout out to the school board. So people may or may not have known that last week was MSBA School Board Recognition Week. And, I mean, I've said thank you numerous times in emails, correspondence, and things like that, but I do want to take this opportunity to not only thank you for myself, but also for our admin team and our staff. We know that it's been a difficult, you know, previous year, two years, for everybody associated with education. And unfortunately, there's been things put upon us that have made it difficult to make decisions, you know, try to do the best that we can. And you have, as a board, have been very supportive in not only, you know, helping us do our job, but also asking really good questions at appropriate times to make sure that we continue to stay on top of the things that we need to be staying on top of. So it's not this week, but, you know, possibly, I just want to say thank you very much for all that our school board has done. I know that it's not been easy and it's taken a lot of time and energy, more so than it typically would, just with what we've had, but thank you very much. If we go back a couple of weeks further, February 7th through 11th was National School Counseling Week. Our school counselors and advocates are actively engaging in helping students examine their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents, working in partnership with parents as they encounter the challenges of raising children in today's world, focusing on the positive way to enhance students' academic, career, and social-emotional development, and working with teachers and other educators to provide an education system where students can truly realize their potential and set healthy, realistic, optimistic aspirations for themselves. And so, we're very blessed in our districts to have a terrific counseling and student advocate group. We are very fortunate that the district is able to support the number of counselors and student advocates that we have. We know that the state of Minnesota, it's not true in all districts, but we've been fortunate to be able to continue to provide that support. Kind of backing off of that, one of the things that our high school counseling department does is they host with a secondary provider, a post-secondary fair. And last Thursday, we had over 300 learners and family members visit over 95 four-year, two-year, community tech and trade schools. And so, it's just a really cool thing, had the opportunity to go up there, watch them set up, look at all the different groups come in, and then just watch the learners walk around and ask questions, you know, get more information about all the possibilities that kind of await them when they graduate FHS. So that's just a really neat thing. It is pretty time-consuming for a couple of our counselors. I know that our custodial group does an awesome job with that, too, because they've got to take down everything in the commons and then put up all these additional tables and then do the whole thing over again when it's done. But it's something that we haven't been able to do the last couple of years. I know they've done it virtually, but they were happy to see almost 300 people come through. Quick legislative update, you know, the main focus the last week and a half has been the legislative redistricting, so there's been a lot of talk around that. You know, for us specifically, we will have a new senator, as Senator Duckworth was moved to a different district. So that will be a change for our district at some point in time. There's lots of bills going on in the House right now and in the Senate. You know, those are great, you know, policy help is great, but, you know, we're really focusing on the funding piece. If you weren't paying attention, they updated the budget surplus today. There's an additional $1.5 billion added to what was previous, so now they're looking at about a $9.2 billion surplus. And then you add on top of that another $1.15 billion federal dollars that the state has to spend. So we are hopeful that they can take care of some of the statutory things that they really need to take care of. We've talked a lot about, and I know that the board has a resolution tonight around, you know, fully funding IDAA, the cost of special education services. There's always a talk and a fight about is there funding? And we know that part of that is the federal government's responsibility, and to be quite honest with you, we don't really care whose responsibility it is anymore, but if there's funds, we would really hope that that gets taken care of. As we said, that's $8.1 million in our district alone. So the House is looking at potentially right now, one-time money and some continuing money for schools plus policy. In the Senate, their conversation is focused really around one-time money. So now that the redistricting will settle down in the next couple of weeks, we'll hear more about some of those bills. I had an opportunity to visit with Commissioner Mueller and Superintendent Jeff Ronenberg from Spring Lake Park around personalized competency-based learning. If you've been paying attention to kind of education, competency-based learning has come up over and over again as kind of a driver of change in education. You know, we've worked around that the last four or five years, but the Federal Secretary of Education has brought that up numerous times in the last month around changing the education system, and it actually is a part of Governor Wallace's supplemental budget. So we want to take the opportunity just to reach out to Commissioner Mueller and really focus around assessment and how assessment probably needs to change if we're really asking our learners to demonstrate their learning in different ways and what do they actually need to go find success, and really base that on a portrait of a graduate. We've created three profiles of lifelong learner that kind of represent our objectives and our strategic plan, and we really strongly advocated that the state create a similar profile so everybody's working off the same thing. Not only what do our learners need from content, but also what are those other skills and dispositions to go find success. Our winter activities are kind of wrapping up. Our boys and girls hockey teams lost in the first round of the section tournament. The wrestling team was the section two for a runner-up. They lost to Apple Valley. They'd beat them earlier in the year and came up just short, but, you know, a section runner-up is a big deal, especially moving into a new section. And then, they have kind of two section tournaments. They do a team and they do an individual. They advanced five individuals to the state meet this week. So Davis, Paro, Dylan Olson, Cole Hanlinmeyer, Gavin O'Neil, and Andrew Keeler are those five individuals that will be wrestling later this week. Speech hosted their home invite, so they had over 18 schools with 226 participants at FHS over a week ago. And Charlotte Varnett was a first-place novice dramatic interpretation. I'm not exactly sure what that is, but first place is a big deal, and I know they were excited about that. The math team finished up their season with a fourth-place finish at their last meet. Boys Swim and Dive had their section meet, and I know Kennedy's going to talk a little bit about that in his update, so I will stop there. And then state gymnastics. Our girls gymnastics team was section runner-up. They were .25 points behind Owatonna to go to state. And they were represented by Isabel Anderson, who competed at the state meet in the all-around, and she was the section all-around champ. So great, great end of the season for them. Aaron Holmes, our FHS band director, was named the Schmidt Music High School Educator of the Year at their Minnesota Music Educator Association Winter Conference. Our ninth-grade band also participated in that, and I know member Saucer was actually a chaperone, I can't think of the name, the chaperone of that. So if she is here, I'm sure she'll have that be part of her board update. And then finally, last thing is on Friday, an opportunity to go join the third-grade team, or third-grade group at North Trail Elementary. So the third graders there have been involved in kind of a reading competition across the state of Minnesota. They track their minutes and they divide them by the numbers, so it's minutes per reader. And they were in the Sweet 16, all right? So they kind of had this thing around March Madness. So they're in the Sweet 16, so I went there, we celebrated with that a little bit, a little basketball theme, and so that was fun for me. And just talked a little bit about the benefits and, you know, kind of the personalized aspect of reading. And now they have two weeks to see if they're going to be in the Elite Eight. So we talked about some ways to add some additional reading minutes. They're number seven right now, so they feel pretty good about it, but you don't want to do everything you can do to advance in the, in March Madness of reading. So in two weeks, I'll give you guys an update of where they are, but they were pretty excited and had a fun little celebration there. So that was rather lengthy, apologize for that. I tried to read fast, hopefully everybody could understand me, but thank you very much.
Well, if you've got so much good news, you need to share it.
Yeah, that's right. Lot of good things going on. And I know that Michael and Kennedy have some additional things, too.
Yeah. So that's next on the agenda, student school board member update.
Hello, everybody. It is currently finals week at the high school, which is kind of stressful for a lot of us because we have to stay on top of all of our work, but it's also very exciting because we get our new classes next week, so that's always fun. We're also looking forward to the early release that's happening this Thursday, and then we have a day off on Friday to kind of rest and relax. On February 17th, it was National Random Acts of Kindness Day. We at the high school, we celebrated that in many different ways. A class offered at our school called Skills for Success, taught by Ms. Marion, held a used clothing drive for the Salvation Army, and that went very well. On this day, student council also made thank you cards for staff members like teachers, custodians, lunch ladies, everyone who works there, to show our appreciation for everything that they do. Student council is also currently working on expanding our social media presence to kind of bring Farmington together. We are currently working on, we're currently implementing interactive prompts for students to contribute to, like, for example, their favorite Farmington memory or something they enjoy doing at like a football game, as well as they are shouting out different sports and activities that are happening that day. Speaking of sports, kind of like Mr. Berg said, many different sports have recently finished. Boys hockey just finished last Thursday. Girls hockey, their game against Owatonna was really cool because they actually went into overtime, so that was really fun to see. Dance and gymnastics, they are also done. Some sports are at the state tournament, such as boys swim and dive and wrestling. For swim and dive, Farmington placed fifth at their section meet, and they also have two state participants, Junior Derek Keane and Senior Captain Brandon Wilsack. Lastly, FCCLA, a volunteer group at our school, participated in a Valentine's Day gram on February 14th, where one could purchase some sweet treats or some flowers to be hand-delivered by a member of this group. All the proceeds went to the Farmington food shelf. Thank you.
Good evening. My first thing is, as winter sports are winding down, naturally, spring sports are coming up. Track is going to be starting on March 14th. I'm on track, for those who don't know. The coaches expect that this year is going to be very successful. We're have, they have, a lot of planning has gone into this next season, purchasing new equipment, more coaching time, more practice, more lifting, everything to really make this year as best as possible, make this season as best as possible. Secondly, the Chill Zone and Tiger Lounge at the high school is off to a great success. The Chill Zone, for those who don't know, is a room in the high school for students to wind down if they've had a stressful day. One of my friends, Maddie Deneen, helps run that. It's been a very, very big success, almost constantly in youth, very beneficial to the student body. They're working currently on spreading info, which hopefully this spreads the info a little bit better. I wanted to talk a little bit more about the one-act play that the drama department put on. Honestly, in my humble opinion, one of the best, one of the best performances that the high school's ever put on. Talked a lot about like college and the stress going into college, which I think resonated with a large portion of the student body. Furthermore, in the high school itself, the tutoring center has received new signage, and to match sort of what the rest of the signage in the media center, we're expecting that that'll bring in more people. It already has started to, but hopefully it brings even more, especially, again, with putting the word out there. The eighth graders in Ms. Minekey's Advanced Language Arts class are currently doing a mock trial as a study in their class of the, on the story A Jury of Her Peers. I'm a captain in a high school mock trial, so I came out and down to the middle school and volunteered to help them figure it out. I would say they're going to be doing very well. They had a practice trial today, their real trial is tomorrow, I'll be a juror on that trial. They, the depth in which they've really dug into this trial has shocked me, and I wanted really all of them to join mock trial next year. So we'll see how that works out. Choir, just general notes, choir went to competition on Wednesday, they did very well. I don't have the specific numbers, but my friend's in it again, and they said they did very well. Finally, I just wanted to echo the college fair. I was there, big attendance. I personally went to like nine, 10 different booths, very beneficial. I think everybody really enjoyed it, and if you had any like stress or concerns about college, I think that really alleviated that. And I think that's my update.
Very good, thank you very much. Our next item is just the consent agenda. The consent agenda is made up of routine business items that can be acted upon with a single motion. If any board member wishes to discuss an item in the consent agenda, they may request it be pulled from the agenda and it will be acted upon separately. Does anybody have an item to be pulled from the consent agenda tonight? Seeing no, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening.
Second. Motion by Hannah, second by Steve. All in favor? Aye. Resolution passes four to zero. So our next items are reports and communications. The first item is radon testing report. Dan.
Thank you Chair Christensen, member of the board, Superintendent Berg, members of the community. Wanted to take just a few minutes here this evening to go over the radon testing information from our tests that we conducted earlier this winter. Just a little bit of background information on this, we are not, we're not required as a school district to perform these tests, but it is highly recommended by both the EPA as well as the Minnesota Department of Health to conduct these. So we do believe that it's in everybody's best interest to do so. So we have done that for a number of years. It's something that's conducted every five years. If you do actually perform this testing, though, it is a requirement that you report the information to the Department of Health. Not going to read through all of this, but basically, radon, if you're not familiar, is kind of a colorless, odorless, tasteless gas. It's a naturally occurring gas in the environment associated with potential risk of lung cancer. So that's kind of the reason why we want to test for it and make sure that it is not at elevated levels in our facility. There was some change to the radon testing process since we last conducted these tests in the past. It's been a long-term radon test and typically takes place over about a four-to-six-week period. The various testing agencies decided that those particular tests were not as accurate and valid as some of the short-term tests, so it is now recommended that we go with a short-term test, so that is what we did this past testing session. So the test kits are in their particular areas for a period of three days before they are picked up. It does mean that there were a lot more tests that were administered, because they also changed some of the specifications in terms of where you were supposed to test, and so we abided by all of the recommendations for the testing. As you can see there, that was conducted in early January. I don't think I've got it in the next one. Oh, maybe I do. We do test. There are some specific components in terms of where we test. Basically, it's testing ground level above a slab, so not all rooms are tested, not all areas are tested. If they are second level, third level types of areas, those are not tested, because the radon gas is something that will stay close to the ground, more dense than most other gases. So that's why in your house, and so on and so forth, it's going to be in the basement if you have a basement, or if you have a slab on grade, it will be on that first level. Also, testing in the winter, because that is when we are in Minnesota, are the most closed up, and so we want the worst-case scenario for testing. So occupied, normally occupied, normal HVAC operation, winter when doors, we don't have a lot of opening windows in schools, but we're, you know, relatively confident that it's worst-case scenario. Good news is, our results came back very good. I will state for those people who go through and actually count the number of tests that were on the previous slide and count the number of tests that are here, there are a few that are missing. That's one of the other reasons that we go with the short-term tests, because the long-term tests, four to six weeks out, the tests seem to disappear periodically. One will go missing here or there, somebody's like, oh, what's this? And it ends up in the trash. So this is also, these results here are a much, much, much higher rate of return on these test kits. There were some that did go missing, but overall, very, very high rate of return on these kits. As you can see, the, kind of the threshold there is anything at or above the four picoliters, and we didn't have anything that was in that range. And in fact, the vast, vast majority of our spaces were at the very lowest level, which is a 0 to 1.9. So overall, good news on that front. And with that, I think, come on. As I mentioned before, we will then report the radon testing to the Department of Health per statute. They do ask that we present the results at a school board meeting before doing that, so that's why we have to hold off until after this meeting before we can do so. And then lastly, I guess, if there's any questions that anyone has, be happy to try to answer. Well, it's pretty exciting, thrilling stuff.
I just have one quick question. It looked like we had 10 buildings we tested in. How many buildings do we own in the district?
Yeah, so this is inclusive of everything that we own, so we also tested our decal site as well. Correct, yep.
Thanks.
Yep.
And I don't know if you can answer this question or not, and it's okay if you can't. I mean, is there any trend line from one year to the next, or is that irrelevant?
Um, there really isn't. And the other hard part with this is that the testing was quite a bit different than what we had done the previous two, five-year testing periods. So, you know, we probably could look at identical rooms and spaces, but we tested far more rooms this time around, so.
Cool.
Different tests.
Yeah, mostly I just think about the net overall, if there's a trend. I don't know, maybe it just doesn't matter. Every once in a while, radon pops into the news and it causes questions in our household, so.
Yep. Yeah, and that's one of the reasons, well, yeah, one of the reasons we do it as well is that, you know, people just want to know, so.
Great. Any other questions?
We do this annually, Dan?
Every five years.
Every five.
Correct, yep.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the COVID-19 update. Thanks, Dan.
All right, good evening, Chair Christensen, member of the board, member of the community. So again, just kind of looking at our data, not really pulling any community data or anything like that, and if you take a look at this, it's very similar to what I shared two weeks ago, when we talked about things getting back to where we'd previously seen them. So the first one is our staff absences, and, you know, Fridays are a little bit higher, Mondays are a little bit higher, but these are well within the ranges that we can handle. And the one to really look at is your unfilled absences. I did look at this morning's, we only had three unfilled absences throughout the district, and that was three paraprofessionals, so we didn't have any classrooms that were unfilled this morning. So again, you know, two things, A, staff being available, not seeing the impact that we had had in the middle of January, and also, I think, subs willing to come back into the workforce. So both of those things working in our favor. Confirmed cases, so again, you know, you look at the far, the two columns to the right, not the quarantine, but again, numbers significantly lower than we'd seen even through November and October. So it's clear and it plays out when you look at the wastewater, COVID levels and wastewater and things like that. Things are down closer to where they were, saying, in late June and early July, and again, what we would see would mirror that, and our quarantine numbers would reflect that as well. And then, you know, just again, just to give a glimpse, Mr. Busman, I think the 24th was on Thursday, I just had him pull the absences real quick, and you can see, we range anywhere between, you know, just over 5% to just, you know, under, right around 9%, which is fairly average, when you just say who's gone for a half-day for all sorts of different things. So again, things continue to, I don't know if you can say trend anymore, but kind of stay right in a really good place, allowing us to continue our operations the way that we need to without disruptions that we've seen in the past. One change, the CDC did lift their requirement for face covering on district-wide transportation, so we had been following that requirement, and as soon as that was lifted, we notified our families yesterday that that was no longer required on district transportation. So the only place, well, actually, there's two. We still have the requirement in place when, when a staff member or learner returns after quarantine or isolation for those, they can return after five days, but then for the next five days, that mask is still required in our settings and on transportation. And we still have the ETS around that impacts our health offices, so there's still a requirement that when, you know, people visit those offices or our nurses have kids in those offices, they're still required to wear face coverings and that, but those are the only two places remaining and stuff, so. Not much is, I mean, good news is, nothing has really changed, and it's stayed pretty consistent since we met last two weeks ago. So I don't know if there's any questions?
It's nice to hear another good news story going on.
Yeah, well, we were, Hannah and Kyle can relate to this, we had meet and confer tonight, and Mr. Rostern, who's a second-grade teacher at FES, he heard a couple of the kids overhearing, and one of the second graders said, COVID's done. It's over. So we hope that he's right, so.
That's all I need.
Yep. So.
All right. I don't have any questions, anyone else?
No.
Great, thank you. All right, thanks, sir.
You are.
You're welcome. So the next item on our agenda in this is a carryover from the work session a couple weeks ago. There, we took up a request to consider whether to continue including public comment in the video and streaming portion of board meetings. Just in summary, there was concern voiced that, you know, for potential abuse of, you know, the platform. We had a brief conversation about what it would imply for business meetings. Technically, we could make that change without changing policy. The agendas for both business meetings and work sessions are set in policy, and technically, the public comment period starts before the agenda, so it's not a difficult change with the business meetings with the work sessions. We would need to change policy in order to effect that. Simply put, we determined at the work session to bring this issue to the business meeting for further discussion. Steve, you weren't here, and Melissa, I think, was, I didn't know if she'd be here for the meeting, but for further consideration. I have my own thoughts, but I just, I think we want to continue to give the issue consideration and would be open to anyone else who wants to weigh in.
Yeah, I can start. I just, since our discussion last time, I thought we had a really good kind of conversation around some of the pros, some of the cons. In between our work session and now, we've all received some emails from board members, or I'm sorry, from community members who have let us know as a board that they do find that valuable, that many, many people can't attend, and I relate to that, you know, prior to being on the board as well. So they, given that the community finds it valuable to hear that public comment portion, I would be in support of continuing to livestream it at this time. I think that just goes along with some of the priorities that we've already talked about around transparency and making it easier for community members to access and connect with us and what we're talking about at the board, including public comment.
No, and I concur everything you just said. I think, again, control in the meeting and nipping it before it starts, somebody that we think's going to abuse it or is abusing it, I mean, is the key to it. So, but I think the public needs to hear that, and I enjoy going back to the recordings myself and playing them over to say, did I catch that right or not? So.
Yeah. Jaclyn?
I'm not like upset one way or the other, so I'm fine with that. I do think that if we, should something happen in the future where we get, you know, a kind of the public comment like we had earlier this year where there's a large number of people, I don't know if we can, because it's public comment, but making sure they are community members, if that's something we can do, you know, because we do get their address and things like that, and then putting something in place to ensure that that, it stays to community.
I think we can continue to, can try to encourage, you know, at the end of the day, public comment is open to anybody with children. They don't have to have children in the school either. They can have students, they cannot have students, they're basically residents, taxpayers, interested community members, and they're stakeholders of the district. That's, that's the purpose. So I think, you know, I think we do have on the card that, you know, they're, we're asking them to self-select what that is, and, you know, I was thinking about this. You're right, we heard from folks that find value in the, in the, in the streaming, they, it's the one way that members of the community can see what other members of the community are hearing or saying, it's the one way that people can engage with the board in that way. Just like Steve said, too, I have also gone back to the recordings, and so it is helpful to have that as a reason. to have that as a resource. But, you know, I think the other side of this too is, you know, we also saw, at the end of the day, I mean, if it's about recording in the extra audience, I mean, they're going to find that anyway. We had individuals that were streaming the meetings from their cell phones in the audience, and that's fine, you know, and I'm not particularly worried about that. But, you know, this is the official recording and the unfiltered recording, and I think that's advantageous too. So, I mean, I'm glad we're having the conversation. It's worth visiting the issue. But if there's no further questions or comments about this right now, then we can, we can move on with our agenda. And that means I would need a motion to acknowledge receipt of reports and communications.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Carrero, second by Doyle. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved unanimously. So we can move on to our administrative actions. The first item is approval of the 2022, 2023 budget assumptions and parameters. Jane?
Thank you, Chair Christensen, board members, Superintendent Berg, members of the community. I'm back here once again to talk about our parameters for the 2223 school year. Just a little reminder, we are building these parameters outside of the legislation, legislature's finishing up their job, right? Their duty ends June 30 to hopefully have information out to us, additional funding, keeping my fingers crossed. But at this time, we need to build parameters on what we know as of today. And so as we look at the document, the changes from what was previously discussed in our February 14th board meeting are highlighted in yellow, and there are three main areas. First of which is taking a look at our enrollment. And even though we continue to see housing developments come up in our district, unfortunately, our enrollment is not following the same trend. We are projecting that our enrollment for 2122 will end up at 6825. For 2223, we are projecting 100 less students. So we are projecting at this time 6725 for the 2223 school year. The next area that we made some adjustments to are the parameters for the allocations out to sites. And there are three main areas to look at. It's our supplies and services, our soft staffing, and our capital outlay. In having conversations with our administrators, we have reduced those allocations to the sites by a 25, 25, 50%. So our supplies and services are reduced by 25%. Our soft staff allocation was reduced by 25%. And our capital outlay allocation was reduced by 50%. The last area to take note of has to do with our elementary class size. Fortunately enough for us, since the passage of our 2015 levy referendum, we have been able to have our class sizes lower than our current policy 1005 that we have for the district. And what you, you see before you is bringing those class sizes back up to that policy. And at this time, that is the recommendation of the administration for our 2223 budget year. And the last little change is just on number 11. It used to read, I believe it was enhancement, and we are changing the word to retainment. Because at this time, we don't believe we are going to be able to enhance anything further, but we would like and strive for retaining what we currently have. At this time, I'll take any questions you may have around our 2223 budget parameters.
Thanks, Jane. Can you talk a little bit about the reductions to the supplies as well as the soft staffing? And in particular, in the parentheses, there are some examples, like testing kindergarten roundup shows. Could you just explain a little bit more about some of those categories?
Yeah, so what we have developed over the last, I don't know, I can't remember when we instituted this, but what we had was different buildings sending different pay stipends, time sheets to the district office for various things. It could be for open house, it could be for kindergarten roundup, it could be for kindergarten assessments. And it was kind of all over the place, to be completely honest. And so what we did to try to mainstream that is we developed a budget, and then we allocated that budget out based on students at each one of the buildings. So then, therefore, each building then is responsible for those funds, instead of us at the district level trying to keep track of everything and going, oh, yes, oh, no, and the building's really not knowing how much they're actually spending in that area. For supplies and services, we allocated for the 2122 school year 25% less. And after our audit, we reinstated that. But due to the current circumstances and our budget situation going forward, we believe that we will be able to make this change and still maintain the needs and supplies for our students.
Okay, that's helpful. That was my question around the impact of especially the services and supplies on our educators, if they would have to supplement, you know, things for their classrooms out of their own pocket. And then, as far as some of the examples you gave by buildings, is it your sense, Jane, that knowing, I'm thinking to the parent side of this, that if there might not be a kindergarten roundup or something like that, is that something that you anticipate would be impacted then by this reduction? That we should be thoughtful about how we're communicating to parents that things that might have happened last year or in previous years aren't going to, aren't going to happen this year, or how?
Not necessarily. It has more to do with COVID, if we're going to have something or not. This more has to do, for, for example, the office, most office staff have two individuals that sit in the front office, and it is then up to the building administrator if one is gone, if they want to hire a substitute. Can they make it with one person? Or is it that day where it's grandparents' day, right? Pre-COVID, right? Grandparents' Day, and they're just going to have a ton of visitors, and they really need to have that extra person in there? So then it's up to the building to decide, oh, yes, I'm going to bring a sub in today, or, oh, we have nothing going on, so I don't need to bring a sub in. So we wanted to allow some flexibility at the sites on what their needs are, realizing that each building has specific needs for different days, and it contained that expenditure instead of no one really taking ownership for it.
Okay, that's really helpful. Thanks for expanding on that.
So, quick question to Hannah's point then. So on something like that, say we don't use a secretary that day because there's two of them, one's out. Can that funding be allocated then to a different area, to a teacher or bringing somebody else in?
So.
For that position?
So that money is theirs to you. So let's just say, for example, the high school has, you know, $25,000, and they can choose to spend that money that best suits them. So if, for example, like I said, they needed an extra person in, they can do that. But yeah, it's their money to spend. I mean, we do overlook it and ensure that it's, they're not spending it on crazy things that they shouldn't. And they're really good about calling and checking with us to ensure it is a proper expenditure for those funds. And so we're staying consistent across the board.
I think it's a great way to allocate it, instead of being specific on that.
Yeah, when did you say you made that, that change was made how long ago?
Oh.
It's been a while.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a while.
Yeah, so that's been in place. So that was just one of the, you know, right now systemic reductions that were made, right? To try to offset, I mean, when you're, again, when you're looking at, you know, that $4 million deficit that we're projecting and using three of the $6 million that we have and trying to come up with a net of $1 million, you know, what are some ways that you can do that? And last year, we made, you know, reductions of about $700,000, and some of these were there, and we just rolled them forward, right? After we had discussions of do we want to continue to make those? Because if we reallocate that back in, now you're just adding back to, you know, your deficit again, instead of, you know, to get to a million, now you're, you know, 1.2 or something like that, so.
I've got a question, I think, on, on class sizes. The policy, I know, you know, the policy is, you know, gives a range for K through first, second grade, third, fourth, especially at the elementary level. I think it seems like that's where the, the class size issue is at least in, in policy more consistently. Do we have classrooms right now that are either at or over that policy? And, and do you foresee that being an issue too? Like, for instance, third and fourth grade says the range is 26 to 29 students. I mean, I know at some point you're going to have a class where there's 30 or 32, and you're not going to hire a new teacher just for those three, but how does that work?
Part of, well, but again, right, so part of, you know, where we are today is because we have continued to lessen class size. I mean, we, we, I mean, I don't, we'd have to look and see, but I don't think there's, I, I don't think there's, I don't think, okay, I don't have it in front of me, I don't think there's any elementary classrooms above policy. I think we, unless some kids moved in, we fixed a majority of almost all of those.
I can't imagine how difficult it is to balance that.
Yeah, well, but I'm, I'm going to be honest with you. I mean, it, we're, you know, again, facing the deficits that we're facing, we are going to be on the higher end of things as we come into this year. I mean, we've been very fortunate and been able to solve a lot of those problems, but we will be on the higher end of things. And so, you know, does that, you know, your question, you know, does that mean you might have a third grade classroom with 29 or 30 potentially this, this coming year? Potentially, yes.
Okay. Thanks. I didn't have a follow-up question. So I'm just kind of curious how that plays out, and I do think about the impact on, on our teachers, obviously. So, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's a hard, it's, I mean, it's difficult. And like I said, this past year, you know, we, we, we tried to fix as much as we could fix, but, you know, if you have a classroom and it's, you know, in that third grade, it's, it's 30, 30, 30, and you add another staff member, now you're significantly below, right? And so it's, it's, it's hard because, you know, you only, you know, families and staff members only see that, but there might be another classroom, you know, grade level in that building that might be lower for some reason, trying to balance that out. And the secondary's run into the same thing. It's just a little bit different because of how they allocate things where, you know, there might be a decision to run, you know, we, we had classes at the high school that may ran higher so we could run something else lower. Now, elementary, that's a little bit different because you're all in one contained classroom and things like that, but, so it doesn't, in the building, it might balance out, but it doesn't necessarily balance out because, you know, they're not organized that way and stuff, so.
All right, thanks. Any other further comments or questions?
Just one last one. Jane, for the item number 11, what the switch from enhancement to retainment, is that related to like professional development dollars for educators? Or is that, because I remember last year, there was an opportunity for savings just because a lot of the things that typically were held, like training and conferences and things, weren't happening right because of COVID. So is that related, or is that something different?
No, that's something different. So those are those positions that we added outside of the classroom to support the student learners. So in previous years, we've hired behavioral interventionists or whatnot to support the classroom. So we're not, I don't believe currently, without the legislation, that we're going to be able to continue to enhance, but we want to be able to retain where we're at.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Yep, absolutely.
If there are no further questions or comments, can I get a motion to approve the 2022, 2023 budget assumptions and parameters as presented?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Doyle, second by Carrero. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Jane. Our next item is the approval of a resolution discontinuing reducing programs and positions.
Good evening, Chair Christensen, members of the board and the community. I'd like to piggyback on Ms. Huska's presentation. The board parameters have been approved now, and so now this resolution gives the authority to the superintendent and the administrators to basically staff their buildings based on the parameters you just approved. So we will take, we will work with our administrators to actually put names and classrooms to paper and look at, are there going to be any program reductions? What teachers who are maybe probationary have to be non-renewed, people taking leaves of absence? So basically, this resolution gives us the authority to go ahead and staff the building so we can build a budget for the 2223 school year. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. Otherwise, we would ask you to approve the resolution.
All right. No questions or comments? Can I get a motion?
I'll make a.
Go, go ahead, Hannah.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution discontinuing and/or reducing programs and positions with a complete resolution to appear in the minute book for tonight's meeting.
Second.
Motion by Simmons, second by Carrero. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Our next item is approval of the IDEA resolution. Member Sausser was a little closer to this, but I will go ahead and take over for her in her absence. So this was, you know, Superintendent Berg mentioned this in his, in his good news. The, the net-net here is the federal government passed the IDA Act, I believe, in 1975 or some, sometime when I was in diapers, probably. And, and at that time, committed to funding 40% of special education costs for, for schools. Congress has never lived up to that promise. And I think, you know, based on what I've read, what, I think it fluctuates. It has been as high as 20%. It's been as low as five, and currently is about 14% of special education costs. And as we talked about very much in, you know, some of the drag we're seeing in the budget resolutions we just passed is related to what, an $8.1 million cross subsidy that property taxpayers of Farmington School District paid to make up for the commitments of the US federal government. And so this resolution is encouraged by MSBA and others to encourage, I guess, school districts, both to pass the resolutions, but also conducting some outreach to our congressional delegations to encourage the federal government to live up to their commitments. I guess I would welcome any questions or comments about this. The, the language of the resolution is on, attached to the agenda for those who want to, who want to see it from the public. I assume the board members have had a chance to review. Any questions or comments? All right. Well, with no further questions or comments, can I get a motion?
Make a motion to adopt the resolution supporting the IDEA Full Funding Act and urge Congress's strong bipartisan support for and passage of the IDEA Full Funding Act as presented.
Second.
Motion by Simmons, second by Doyle. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. That ends our administrative actions. We now have a series of policies to review. Is this?
I can take this.
Okay, thanks.
So this is the third and final reading for the policies listed before the board this evening. Policy 1002, student retention, promotion, and acceleration. Policy 1005, management of elementary class size. Policy 1007, shared time students. So these have all been before the board, as well as the policy committee. Per our policy, this is the third and final reading required before approval on updating these policies. If there are any questions or discussion, I'd be happy to take those that I can or connect with Lori and Mary Ann for others.
Great, so can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt policy 1002, student retention, promotion, and acceleration. Policy 1005, management of elementary class size. And policy 1007, share time students as presented.
Second.
Motion by Carrero, second by Doyle. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. These policies pass unanimously. So last part on our agenda is board remarks. I guess I'll start with our students. Do you have anything else to say that you haven't already?
No.
I warned you guys that they were going to ask you again.
You got to leave a little something in the tank.
Nope.
Okay, now it's all good.
Thank you to all of you for having us here today.
All right, thanks, Kennedy. Thanks, Michael. Hannah?
So just want to congratulate all of the many students who are highlighted, both in Superintendent Berg's good news, as well as those shared by our school board members tonight. A lot of really exciting achievements that have been happening. Thank you to our school counselors and student advocates who are working so hard on behalf of our, our students and our kids. Mental health is something that I know I care about deeply in our board and all of the people leading our district, and so thank you for the work that you do every day to forward that, especially in the last two years with so many unique situations to have encountered for, for your day-to-day. to have encountered for, for your day-to-day work. Lastly, I want to highlight that the high school is, is hosting the community expo on March 5th from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. So come out, visit the high school and talk with a lot of different businesses. I think I'll be there. I'm sure other board members might be too. And so we'd love to see people. It'll be a little weird having a large event back, you know, following COVID, but really, really looking forward to that. Thanks.
Jacqueline?
All right. I'll just kind of piggyback off what Hannah said to congratulate the athletes that did, that are going to state and the, the sports teams that just wrapped up their seasons. Good luck on finals this week. Hopefully, it's not too stressful for everyone. And thank you to the teachers who I know are ramping up for conferences and will have a busy, busy week. So that's all I got.
Steve? Again, it's, it's tough to beat what everybody said tonight. Superintendent Berg and I think our student school, school board members, you guys did an outstanding job of good news. So I appreciate that, as long as, as well as our other board members. The biggest thing to me is two things. Again, congratulation to Aaron Holmes out there for, for the Smiths Music High School Educator of the Year. And good luck to all the students doing finals this week. It's hard to believe it's finals already. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thanks. I don't have a whole lot more to add, but I do want, you know, we talk about the consent agenda being routine items that don't require a lot of discussion. There are some always interesting nuggets in the consent agenda, and consent agenda. And in this one in particular, I mean, this is maybe close to my heart because it's where my kids went to elementary school. But there's over $14,000 in gifts from the parent that are basically the result of parent-teacher partnership work. And I know that that happens at every single one of our elementary schools. And I think it's outstanding. That's where, you know, so many parents are involved in making those fundraising opportunities happen. I, I believe that also happens at the, at the, at the middle schools and at the high school too. But I think it's important just to underscore and recognize the work of those parents. There's also a couple of contributions here from Delta Dental, Artisonia, which I think the, I've bought my kids' artwork for, you know, for gifts. And it's just, I know, again, it's great ways that we're finding other ways to, to fund excellent enrichment programs for our students. So I want to thank the North Trail Parent Teacher Partnership. And by way of that, thank all of the other parent-teacher partnerships at all of our schools, because without it, our schools can't, our students don't have nearly the opportunities that they have right now. So thanks a lot. That's all I got. And since, since I'm the last one, that means I have to do something. Let's see. So board remarks. So that ends the, the open meeting portion of tonight's school board meeting. And now, I think, what do we need? A motion to go into closed session?
Yep.
Per Minnesota Statute 133.03 for labor negotiation strategy.
So moved at 6:52 PM?
Second.
Motion by Carrero, second by Doyle. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We will recess for a couple minutes and go to closed session. Thanks for joining the, the meeting tonight.